Twenty first meeting of the Brainerd Planning Commission. We have a roll call, please.
Duval, Francis, Grunewald, Norwood.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Gorham.
Here. All right, very good. Looking for a volunteer to lead the pledge of allegiance? Dave?
Again? You did so good last time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, one God.
Let's get the job next month. I don't know. Pretty good. Looking for an approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved Stingline.
Second. Norwood.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. Looking for approval for the July minutes?
So moved Norwood.
Second. Stingline?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, we have minutes. All right, we are up to unfinished business. Item six, a single item here. We're going to have a public hearing on ordinance regulating garage requirements for residential housing units is what we're looking at. James, you want to lead us off a little bit?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as proposed, two to four unit buildings would no longer have a garage requirement while single family homes would be required to either have a 12 by 20 garage or a 10 by 12 shed. This would allow the market to dictate the construction of garages and lower development costs for affordable housing, which is something that Planning Commission has been interested in kind of doing both of those items. So with that, staff recommends holding a public hearing for the proposed ordinance and recommends approval.
Excellent. Any questions for James before we get started with the public hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to open a public hearing at 6:02. I'm inviting anybody either online or in public that would, in person tonight, that would like to comment on the, any, on the, on our ordinance. I'm hearing none. All right, nobody online? All right, very good. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:03. Then we'll open up the floor discussion. Everybody has had a chance to look at the proposed ordinance? Any questions about the proposed ordinance? Seems pretty straightforward. As our resident builder, Mr. Peterson, do you have any feelings you think we're making a good step here?
Yes, I do.
I know this was an issue that was important to you?
Yep.
Very good. All right. Well, not hearing any other discussion, I would certainly entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I think that's appropriate. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? I'm hearing no discussion. So all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. We have passed an ordinance or moved an ordinance onto the city council level, that'll be the next level on that. And that gets us moving right along to new business. We have three items on new business. We're going to have a couple hearings and then we'll have a discussion. And I suspect most of you are here for 7B, but hopefully 7A won't take too long here. So, James, can you tell us a little bit about the CUP amendment for the YMCA?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Brainerd family YMCA has applied for a conditional use permit amendment to construct a 50-foot by 50-foot fenced-in playground at the commercial daycare facility at 703 Oak Street. Again, this was the CUP that was brought before, the Planning Commission City Council roughly probably a year ago. So this is, in that original conditional use permit, they were walking the kids across the street over to the YMCA facility. So this would be constructing its own playground on that property, so they'd no longer have to do that. I was told by the applicant, there's a slight change based on cost of what they're looking at for their fencing around the playground. So they'd be looking at doing a five, still a five-foot-high fence. The privacy part of it would be along the house side, and then the remaining part would be a chain link with a kind of a privacy mesh around it, which would still meet code. So a slight change based on cost, originally within the findings of fact, it had stated that it was going to be an all-white privacy fence around everything. So with that also, they're proposing to also put a permanent play structure that's pictured in the findings of fact, as well as some weatherproof outdoor storage boxes for the loose toys. The applicant has stated that they have done an unofficial parking assessment over the course of a couple weeks here before the application. The location of the proposed playground will not interfere with the pickup or drop-off of the children on a daily basis. The playground will be off to the side and will not hinder any parking or backing up of the parking lot area. They will also have new lines painted in the parking lot to help guide parents and employees where needed for their allotted parking spaces. Again, the town center does not require parking spaces for this, so they're not removing any required parking spaces. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit amendment for an outdoor playground at 703 Oak Street Brainerd.
Very good. Any questions for James? I've got just a quick one. What is the current use of this piece of property? Is it a parking lot? Is it a lawn? What is it currently?
So currently behind it is an asphalt area. I'm not sure if they're actually parking in this area or not, but you have the building that's facing Oak Street, and then there's a parking lot that's behind the building. So right now, it's an asphalt area that would just be converted into a playground.
Sure seems like a, an upgrade. I like that. All right, I know without any other questions, I'll open a public hearing at 6:06. If the applicant is here, they're very welcome to come up and address the group.
All right.
We're pretty friendly.
I'll see what I can do.
All right. Name an address and let us know what you're up to.
Hi, I'm Macy Barrett. I'm representing the Brainerd YMCA today. You said the address is what you need?
You can just, yeah, your address or just generally where you live? We're looking for that.
Okay, I live in the Baxter area.
I'll accept that, good enough.
Okay. So with this conditional use permit, yes, the idea is to get a playground onsite for our children. This location houses our infants and toddlers, so we can have up to 42 toddlers and 24 infants onsite each day. With the size needed of the fencing, each child is required 75 square feet per child outside. So in order to have at least two classes, up to 20 kids outside onsite at any given time, we would need this 50 by 50 area. We would be looking to put a permanent play structure on the play area and then with the mesh fencing, being able to put all those toys away and make it aesthetically pleasing as possible. We do utilize the parking in that lot. We have gotten the lines painted on there to help guide parents and staff on where it is that they can be parking. Most of the parents don't stay long-term, so they just come in, drop off and leave for the day, so that shouldn't be an issue. There would still be space to utilize the easement and get through the parking lot as needed on the right-hand side there. And then it's just kind of a turnaround. Yep, so we're kind of looking at that space there, kind of as close as we can to the building so that we're not walking the kids too far along into the parking lot area. As we talked about earlier, right now, we are just walking the children over to the YMCA. We do have little buggies that they get transported in to keep them safe. So this would help with the transportation and then being able to utilize the playground in the winter so that they can get outside in the wintertime as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody any questions from AC before we, please, James?
As far as any communication with the neighbor and any concerns of theirs, have they expressed them?
No, I, the only thing I've ever heard is that they were looking to get a privacy fence up along their property line, but I have not discussed anything about the children playing on the other side of the fence. So that is something I can look into. I was told it was a rental property, so that will be something I have to kind of dig into to see who the property owner is.
And then one more. Recently, we've also had another childcare facility that came for a fenced-in area and then had to come back after a little bit more of expansion to the facility. Is there more room for you guys to grow the playground area if needed?
I would say yes. I don't know that it would be necessary, just because we don't want to limit the amount of parking spaces with that amount of children that we can care for. We also need a lot of spots for our staff to park, but we can expand it if we need to.
Okay.
Other questions from AC? My only question is, what are the chances that each kid stays in their 75-square-foot?
Zero. Zero, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Would anybody else like to discuss on this? Contribute to the discussion? Anybody online? I'm hearing nothing, so I'm going to close our public hearing at 6:10. And going to open it up to do discussion in the group. I personally can't think of a bad thing about this. So if there isn't any other discussion or any other questions, sure looking for a motion?
I would make a motion.
All right.
To move forward.
Very good. Were there any, no, we don't have any conditions or no, this one's pretty clean. Good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second with Norwood. All right.
Mr. Chair, I believe I need to say officially that I will be abstaining.
All right, that's, I do appreciate that. You gave me the word earlier. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Very good. All right, we are moving along now. We're up to the future item here. We're looking at the 7B. This is the proposed ordinance to prohibit outdoor storage for crypto or other related uses. James, would you get us up to speed, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So due to the sound level concerns, the city council directed staff at the August 5th city council meeting to draft an ordinance that would prohibit outdoor storage for crypto mining facilities, data centers, AI centers, and similar uses. So staff has included this in the proposed ordinance, as well as provided some general cleanup of this section as there were references to old section of code and incorrect indentations in there. One such addition was to require outdoor storage to be 100 feet from residential property, parks and schools. And then added some clarification for screening on there as well, because it just said it needs to be screened from view. So with that, staff does recommend holding a public hearing for the proposed ordinance and recommends approval.
All right, very good. Any questions for James before we get started here? Hearing none, we're going to open a public hearing then at 6:12. I'm going to certainly invite anybody who'd like to come up and speak. Y'all know the, you've been here before, and so name an address, and if you can keep things to a few minutes, that'd be great, but come on up. Sarah, you're not going to be first, come on. Yes, you are.
Hi, Sarah TC, 11687 Oak Ridge Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. Just thank you, all of you and everyone who's been here and along this journey and supportive it. We're very glad to be moving forward and hope that you all support this. It seems to be a good move, and I just want to share that recently I've had several other cities across Minnesota reaching out to me looking for help on this very same issue. So good to get ahead of it before it's a bigger problem. So that, I think that's all I have to say. I think you all understand our concerns pretty well at this point, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for anybody else who'd like to come up and speak tonight? There we go.
Karen TC at 12437 Oak Ridge Road, Brainerd. Our property, actually in our house, is like three-quarters of a mile from the current crypto mining that has outdoor storage, and we can hear it continually. And so I'm sure the current bid there, that option that was available, it was like for 40 units, and I think they only have 10 currently. I don't, I think it's like 10 out there. But they have no fencing or noise barriers, and we can continually hear their fans going. So that's just something that the noise level with something larger is going to be quite loud. And like I said, ours, it's continual, especially if you want to sit outside, you can really hear. And I know the people from the trailer park, they thought it was my husband out there with the tractor or something that was going all the time, but it was just noise from the crypto mining facility. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else like to speak during the hearing? See some people thinking about it. All right, let me give you one more chance. I don't think we have anybody online. No, doesn't look like it. So I'm going to close the public hearing then at 6:14. Open the floor to discussion on this. Any questions? Any ideas?
We've asked this so many times.
Well then, I've got a question for James if nobody else does. With the existing crypto facility, are they going to be impacted by, with their permits that they're operating on, will they be impacted by this change?
The main thing is they wouldn't be able to expand their operations if this were to be implemented. It wouldn't impact their existing operations.
Okay, very good. So they can continue what they're doing, but they can't, can't get any bigger?
Yep.
Very good. I know you talked about other uses besides crypto. What other uses do you guys have on the radar that you're considering that could be?
So, yeah, so AI centers and data centers, which would be like data storage centers for like Google and stuff, would, you know, run similar type of equipment in there. So those would be, you can't foresee every type of technology that, you know, runs off of this type of heat, so that's why we put similar uses in there. That's kind of standard language that we have in some of our other code. But, you know, the ones that come off, you know, come off of mine is data storage centers as well as AI centers.
All right, very good. Yeah?
Can it be for James? Why are we, I guess when it gets down to it, we're looking at noise.
Yes.
Why are we eliminating it then to the AI centers, the data centers? Why isn't it, I don't know, just, you know, you can't film a movie, an action movie there, a Stallone movie on that site, because it would be so loud with everything blowing up.
So there's, yeah, there's still MPC standards that every industrial use has to, to be, to abide by. You know, this one, as it's been stated in the past, does operate 24 hours a day. So that's why I think, you know, the public's voice concerns about that and why this one's kind of unique compared to other uses.
Mr. Norwood?
And so just to clarify, within this ordinance, this is just limiting, it is limiting the data mining, AI, those kinds of things as far as being conducted in outdoor storage units?
That's correct. So the processors themselves can't be outside. The just-for-crypto uses air cooling out there, so that's a big difference from, from other types of, and the interim use permit that the Planning Commission reviewed as well, the data processors were outside.
Good. Other questions for James or discussion points? Well, I guess we're looking for a, looking for a motion here. Doesn't look like so. Looking for the, to recommend as, as it is. I guess we're looking for a, looking for a motion?
So moved.
All right.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Yes, Tiffany?
I, I think this is dealing with the problem that we're looking at right now, but I still want to come back to sound and noise in a bigger, bigger discussion or broader ordinance.
Here.
That was my point.
Yes, I think it was, that I, but we'll do this for now and then we'll do something bigger and better in the future.
Very good. We got a new year coming before you know it and all that kind of stuff, and new itinerary to make and all those things. All right, so with that being said, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Very good. This goes back to the city council, is that the next step here?
Yep, so it would go back to the next city council meeting for a first reading, which, because the next Monday for city council is Labor Day, it'd be on the Tuesday, which I believe is the 3rd of September.
All right. Very good. I think we'll, unless you guys want to stick around for a fascinating discussion about building design standards, we'll give you a minute here to, to move along with the rest of your evening. I can make them stay.
I think we should make them stay.
There are going to be pictures.
It's going to be fun.
Tell us what they've learned. Yeah, yeah. Reflect on it. You're welcome, thank you. All right.
Well, this is going to be an internal meeting.
All right. That moves us up to, we're ready to move on to item C here. This is going to be, we're going to look at providing direction for building design standards. And if I interpret this right, this is kind of cleaning up some of the work that we did when we, when we did the revision of the, of the code and try to clean up a few things. James, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the last planning, or two planning commissions ago, Planning Commission directed staff to take a look at this, kind of two things. So we didn't take an in-depth look originally when we were looking at this as potential design standards within the city of Brainerd, but then also some of our setbacks and how things work. Staff has, we've now worked with this code for a couple of years now and have seen things that, you know, could maybe be tweaked with, with our design standards work here. So with that, staff did prepare a document that I figured we could kind of go kind of step by step and figure out maybe a general consensus, or if we need to create motions on direction for staff, we can. But figuring out, you know, exactly what the Planning Commission would like staff to work on for a potential ordinance here. So the first one that I included in here was some of our setback standards within TN1, TN2, CN1, CN2 district. It kind of deals with lot sizes, setbacks. I tried to put things that I think were strengths that I've seen within the ordinance that has been good, and then some things that have maybe been difficult for contractors or difficult to interpret or had made things difficult for, for development. So within that, I kind of went with the TN1 standards here because I didn't want to put every single one of them in here, but a lot of them kind of work hand in hand with, with what we did. So the first one, alley, if present, access and garage/parking is required. This, we had a similar code to this in the previous one that stated it should be what the predominant type of development is in there. If you have driveways, you can maybe do a driveway. This kind of cleaned it up and made it easier to interpret. If there's an alley, then garage placement as well as a driveway would have to be in the alley. So I do believe from a staff perspective that this one has been beneficial, and it really hasn't created too much problems with people wanting to do garages or do infill development. So just wanted to mention that. Density in most of our zoning districts hasn't, you know, been too big of an issue. I think the comprehensive plan and the densities that we worked through did a good job. Whenever we are looking at doing a duplex or a triplex, I have to look at density within the block, and so far, it hasn't been an issue. The one area that we did look at too with density was the My Neighbor to Love Coalition project, just to kind of get a gauge when you're doing an apartment on a certain lot, are you meeting the density requirements that we're looking for in a TN2? That one kind of just met it with the, there is 12 dwelling units there and the dwelling units per acre matched up to it. So anything less, there could have been some considerations or concerns that it's not being developed enough. The other thing that I think's been beneficial is we used to have, I think, a maximum height of 15 feet for a garage, which you're getting some larger vehicles now. People that do construction work, you know, F-350s, F-250s weren't quite, you know, fitting into garages. So I think this has been a good change as well, where you can go up to the structure of the, the house or 30, well, 35-feet structure of the house. So essentially matching, you're not having garages that are out of place still. If you have a single, single, a single-story house, you're not doing a 35-foot garage. Again, this may help then to, you know, maybe add some accessory dwelling units to properties as well. So I think this one has been a good change that we've seen allowed, allowed property owners to really reinvest in their property. Right now, we're working with a gentleman who needs a slightly higher garage, and it's going to allow him to stay in the house and, you know, meet the needs of the site. So that one's, I think, been a, a good change as well. One of the weaknesses here, and I think we'll go one by one to get your guys' thoughts on here. One of them is lot size range. So for instance, in the TN1 district, you have a lot size range of 5,000 to 7,500 square feet. Most lots in the TN1 district are going to be 7,500 square feet exactly. So it does happen quite often where there, there's maybe like a separate lot next to it that's smaller than your typical one, it could be 2,000 square feet, that you can't add that on to that 7,500-square-foot lot. So we're going through one right now where somebody may have to come for a variance. It's not adding a lot of flexibility here, and I think the intent of, of that lot size maximum was to reserve, you know, a whole separate lot from being combined with another one, because we want a house to be built on it. So staff's recommendation for this one is maybe you let, you know, right now, we have 7,500 square feet. Maybe you let that one be 1.5 times of what our maximum is. That still wouldn't allow somebody to combine with a vacant lot next to them, a full vacant lot, but allow flexibility with kind of small cleanups that are next to existing lots. I don't know if that makes sense. I can kind of answer any questions on that the Planning Commission may have on that.
Mr. Norwood first.
So with, that's my one concern is that as vacant lots and the encouragement for infill and the shortage of housing, that, so in your opinion, there wouldn't be necessarily that opportunity for individuals to pick up their neighbor's vacant lot all that easily?
Exactly. So what we, what we saw prior to this is, you know, if a fire happens next door, house gets, you know, has to be torn down, that neighbor is the first one inquiring about that property so they can have, you know, more space to store things or another garage. So really, to do that, you'd need a lot size maximum of, you know, 14, 15,000 square feet. So I'm proposing to only limit that to about 11,000 square feet, somewhere in there. So that would still prohibit somebody from combining that lot over there, but would allow, it happens quite often where there's an odd piece of property right next to that one that they can't combine to it. So it would allow for not having them to come in for a variance essentially, because, you know, it's still tough even in that instance to figure out what your practical difficulty is. So it would allow more, I guess, leniency within the code to be able to do simple and easy consolidations that make sense, but still wouldn't allow people to consolidate with the neighboring property.
Mr. Peterson, yes?
A follow-up on yours is why? Why are we limiting a neighbor from buying it? Why couldn't they just still even buy the whole thing and, and just utilize it the way it is? I get, I, I'm confused why we're limiting it, why a neighbor can't buy the property?
So again, yes, so what we found is, you know, Brainerd property, when they, when they are demolished like that, is quite cheap. So by taking away that property and having the neighbor just use it for storage and just a larger, larger yard, you're really prohibiting then a home being built on that property. So when, you know, when you have to come, say, do a street improvement project on there, you're not really hitting your density that you should be, you know, hitting on some of these streets by having just large yards. We're getting, we're getting older, you know, and older homes, we want, you know, to see these lots infilled. So at that point, when street improvement projects need, need to come down there, we have utilities there already, we're not having to expand into other areas or annex other areas. We're, we're putting homes in where we have utilities. So that's really was the, the thought process behind it. I did add a part in here too that potentially having a CUP to exceed the maximum rather than a variance could be an option, because it, I do see a difficulty, and this hasn't happened before. But if somebody wanted to propose, say, a fourplex on two lots, you know, there should be an opportunity to combine two lots at that point. It would make sense, because they can't just do it on, on one lot. So I thought a CUP might be a good option, so Planning Commission can review that, okay, we're, we're really adding the units that we want to see here, we're adding the building that we want to see. It's not just being used for, for green space essentially. So that's staff recommendations. I can certainly answer any other questions from Planning Commission.
Mr. Norwood?
For the consideration of the conditional use permit process as to facilitating some of that infill and increasing higher density, is there limitations being that it is TN1 as to facilitate that type of development?
So TN1 does allow for one to four units. It doesn't allow for five-plus.
How about within design standards as to aesthetics to retain the neighborhood type of feel within the design?
And that's something that we'll kind of discuss later on, what some of our design standards might be for one to four unit buildings. So there's an idea that we certainly do want them to conform to the neighborhood.
And where I'm headed with that is there is a, within some of our T1, TN1 districts, there is different periods of time from when they were built as to, and so there, if you walk down and you see a brand-new building that looks like it's a completely different design and doesn't match any of the rest of them, it's a little bit weird. Versus, so I guess where I'm headed with it is that maintaining the neighborhood design aesthetic when doing a fourplex or something like that, it's, it's been a long time consideration within the city. There's parts of it that I love and there's parts of it that I hate, and I'd hate to just completely abandon it without any concern or consideration for the reason why it was put there.
Just a question for you. What change would you like to see in the language to reflect that? I mean, do you see something we need to change to do this, or are you supporting what we're doing?
Staff's recommendation as to how it is laid out in the packet here, I believe is liberal enough to help facilitate for more administrative development, administrative permitting and development. But I don't, but it's also conservative enough to still make sure that.
You like it?
I like it.
All right, very good. Mr. Peterson again.
Yeah, one more file with that. I mean, we can't stop the neighbor from buying it. It just combining the lot onto his, so he could still buy it and do whatever or do nothing with it.
So, yeah, so a neighbor can still buy it for, if they want a bigger yard, they can have a bigger yard. What is, what typically we get approached with is they want to have, combine it so then they can use that square footage to build a massive garage.
Understand.
So. What's that?
Or a pool.
Yeah, so, so anything that doesn't require building permit, like fences, fences, just zoning permits, sheds, they can put that type of thing in there, a temporary pool, something like that, a bigger yard. You know, nothing prohibits them from buying it. It's really just the combination to really, what's typically really just the, the combination um to, to really, what's typically done is, is looking for a larger garage.
It's all about the garage. All right. Uh, I, I, I like where you're going with it because I think it's, um, it's, um, it's supported by the comprehensive plan. So it makes a lot of sense to me. What you got next?
So very similar to the lot size, um, lot frontage on all roads. Um, in the TN one it's fifty to sixty feet. Um, staff's recommending probably maybe going to something like seventy-five, which would be again, your typical lots fifty feet wide, just to provide a little bit of extra um possibilities for, for consolidations to clean up things as well. So I don't know if there's any comments from that. Very similar to the, the last one.
I think, I think you can keep going. I think we're good. Maybe at the end of the section, we can.
So the, so I'm just noting this. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm recommending any changes for it. Um, we spent a lot of time on accessory dwelling units um when we were building this code. Uh, right now they're permitted on the corner lot and there is a C, uh, conditional use permit for interior lots and they're not allowed um on rental units. So just wanted to kind of make note, we have not had anybody, um, we've had inquiries on it mainly from rental properties asking, you know, can they create more space and more housing? Um, it's not allowed for rental properties. Uh, we've had a few people, um, I'd say more rural areas asking for accessory dwelling units and, and uh, um, just, we haven't had really a lot of traction with this. So just kind of want to make note of it and see if there's any, anything the planning commission wants to see different from this.
Any comment on that for the group? Otherwise, that makes some sense to me.
I guess I would like to see a recommendation if you have one and can put some more. I, I just, I feel like there's, we have places we can put these things where people can live and I'm disappointed that we haven't had more of them being.
So I, I think the only thing that would probably open it up is if you open it up to um rental, rental lots to do accessory dwelling units. Still would require a conditional use permit. Um, you know, so it could be reviewed. I guess it'd be if, if it's an interior lot, if it's a corner lot and you open it up to residential, it would just be permitted at that point. Um, so maybe there's a, a give and take. Maybe it's always a CUP, but you open up to rental properties. Um, so then there's still, neighbors can still um, you know, kind of give their opinions on it. It can be reviewed by, by planning commission, city council, checking to see if there's enough parking um in, in these areas. So that could be one potential change to, to try to have more housing and ADUs within the city of Brainerd.
So on a rental, would we be talking about like a fourplex plus uh another uh unit above the garage or something? Is that, I'm trying to imagine what, what AD, what this would look like for a, for rental unit?
Or, or it could just be done in a single family homes um to add an, an extra unit to the site. It could just be, you know, strictly done with, with single family.
And then rent it out?
And then rent it out.
Okay. All right. That's making some sense. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
With that, I mean, I never even thought about that, but we're, we're talking affordable housing and the young people trying to afford things. It'll get abused by, you know, rich old white guys or whatever, but to do that, but that is a way to supplement income on that for young families, I guess, if you did allow it. As of right now, it's not.
So as of right now, if you're the homeowner, you're allowed to do that and rent the accessory dwelling unit out. If it's a rental property, you're not allowed to then build an accessory dwelling unit and rent that out as well.
So that is being followed up with if the, somebody buys it, moves, buys a different house, but keeps that and rents both? That's being followed up on?
So that would not be allowed if, say they, they bought it, built an accessory dwelling unit and then they decided to move, um, you wouldn't be able to renew your rental license at that point.
All right.
Is there, is there any, would planning commission like to see a potential ordinance that would allow that or, you know, some direction from planning commission might be helpful? Or do you leave it as is?
Tiffany, you got any thoughts on that?
I, I think I'd like to see something to discuss that has more maybe leniency or ideas to try and move this.
Okay. Yeah, I can, yep, I can certainly craft some language and, you know, the next one will be again a draft. So can certainly be struck from the, the draft if the language doesn't work.
Good. Making sense to you, James? Anything else? Otherwise, we can move on to item D, the garage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, this is something that uh, you know, staff's kind of looked at in depth, um, worked with developers. Um, I know Dave has some of some opinions on this one as well. Uh, when we were looking at pictures uh with the garages, initially when we were creating the zoning code here, certainly the planning commission uh and city council didn't like that uh look where the garage protrudes twenty feet out or fifteen feet out in front of the house. And that's really all you see when you go down, down neighborhoods. Um, so, so with that, the, the contemporary neighborhood as well as traditional neighborhood uh ended up implementing that the garage when attached has to be set five feet, feet behind facade of the principal structure. Um, so this has, you know, it's not really contemporary design that you see in neighborhoods going up right now. Um, you look at some of the houses in Holton, for example, they're still able to abide by the, the old zoning code as it's, as uh we had drafted the ordinance. Um, typically you see the garage, you know, maybe five feet out in front of the house and then there's a, a living space up above it. It doesn't really have that protruding look like the, you know, definitely didn't want to see that twenty-foot garage out in front. So there is some character um to that. And then uh also when we're looking in kind of that grading area, there's a lot of ramblers where the garage, you know, lines up with the house. So every now and then I'll get a, an inquiry of maybe adding onto the garage there. Well, then that becomes a problem because all of a sudden they have this garage that lines up, but if they want to add to the garage, then they're going to have to do a five-foot setback from it. Um, so, so staff's recommendation with that um is to maybe be a little bit more lenient on that and, and really create, you know, part of, part of this um form-based code is we have these different neighborhoods and right now we have traditional neighborhood and contemporary neighborhood having the same setbacks. Um, in, in my opinion, contemporary neighborhoods are maybe a little bit different than the traditional neighborhoods for this potential setback where we, in the contemporary neighborhood, we can maybe allow a garage five feet out in front of the facade. And then in traditional neighborhoods, it would have to be lined up with the facade. So that's what staff is recommending. I know there, there can be difficulties with how roofs line up when you are trying to have garages behind um structures. A lot of times when you see it in, in say North Brainerd, you have a two-story house with a garage that, that abuts that. You're not seeing a lot of that type of development anymore. So this is staff's recommendation to, to make it, I guess, more development-friendly in the city of Brainerd.
Any thoughts on that, folks?
Good job.
All right. Very good. I think if there's a, if we're good with that section, then we're ready to move on to good old uh five fifteen dash four general building development and design standards.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So kind of before going into this discussion items, I did want to uh um kind of mention one of the strengths I see of the new code and we, I know we spent a lot of time on this, is not wanting to see those houses that have a garage in front and a five-foot entrance. Um, so having kind of that, needing that thirty, thirty percent facade to seventy percent garage hasn't really impacted development, but I think will ensure that we're not having again, kind of that big garage with just this little five-foot entrance on there. Um, so I do think that's been a, a, a good add to the code and, and something that, you know, should be retained and, and has been, has been a, a benefit. Uh, so with that, um, kind of discussion items that I've listed here, uh, so staff recommends that the entrance of a one to four unit building be orientated to a street and not the predominant orientation of other buildings. This would kind of remove a gray area um from the code where um you have to at least have an entrance on, on a street. So right now we had a picture. Sean, if you want to pull up um the pictures that I sent, if you want to go to the bottom, keep going, keep going, and then one more, I think. So here's one that doesn't have a front entrance. Um, I think it probably is lacking in, in site design because not, of not having a front entrance. I know originally um there's, this one went through a couple variances and there were other homes on this block that didn't have front entrances. But uh, you know, staff recommends probably that there should be, you know, always a requirement for that. Uh, so I wanted to get planning commission's take on that. Uh, this is uh an example of, of where it probably could have been enhanced with the door on the front.
Any thoughts on that, folks?
Yeah, I have some thoughts on that, I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
I liked all the pictures. I think all the houses can work simply because everybody is different and, and what a floor plan may not work on a particular lot for what the people are looking for possibly. I, I think there's many ways to dress up something. Um, I don't know. Yeah, there's probably many people that don't like my house and vice versa, you know. So I, I just think it's, I don't know why we're necessarily setting designs for someone else that's, that's not ours, I guess. That would be my, that's my feeling on it. So.
Very good. Other thoughts? If not, I'll weigh in. I'll say that it, it's, it's a balance. I, I, I hear you that, that individuals are going to have their own way to do it, but it is our job to create a cohesive city that works as a whole because every, every property in a neighborhood affects every other property, the value of every other property in a neighborhood and the perception of it. And so I, I, I don't think we need to have a cookie cutter world, but I do, I hate that. I hate that look. And I, I, I just think that looks so much smarter when you have the doors coming out like that and you can see the entranceway. I think it creates a warm neighborhood. That's just my personal view. Any other view on any of the other points? Any of the discussion points on there? If not, what else are we moving on to? What else you got there? We are up to three already or do you have some other points on?
So yeah, some more on number two. So that's just kind of the first item. Um, so also looking at one to four unit buildings, um, possibly having some higher standards than are, that are listed um than, than what are listed right now. Um, possibly adding brick or stone, alternative side, uh siding patterns, porches, covered entries, shutters, et cetera. Um, thinking that homes should be potentially required to incorporate two elements. Um, these are the ideas that I had for covered porches, shutters. So what we're seeing, if you want to pull those pictures back up, Sean, in a lot of our infill, if you go further up, so these are, most of these are, are habitat homes that are built. So certainly built on a budget, um, but would meet, you know, this one meets probably three of the items. You have, you know, different siding patterns with the, the gabled end there. You have shutters, you have a covered area. So very simple things can be, can be done to, you know, here's another example of just a covered porch and shutters. So things can be done to enhance the front and help them blend in with the, the block. Here's another one with a, a covered porch, all different color on the top and I'm sure usually they put shutters on. So this is an idea by staff, um, kind of looking at simple ways and, and fairly cost-effective ways to just dress the front up in some of these neighborhoods.
Mr. Norwood?
For, I know that I didn't weigh in on item A, but I'm going to again. Um, but in conjunction with item B, I believe both of the items there are moving in a quality direction. Um, I understand the point of view as to adding more requirements that would potentially cost more, but the, the potential of costs, additional cost will not be greatly, um, especially when we're considering the, the garage situation that we just got done a little bit ago and the amount of significant cost that that would be. These are small compromises as to continued quality design elements.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Um, as a builder, I'll prospectively disagree with small costs as far as when you get to stone, brick, stone, some of those things. Siding's are not a big issue, but when you get to those harder surfaces, there is quite a cost difference, I guess, when it gets down to it. Where like the pictures that you've got, I think are, are great. Like something like that can be easily done, a couple colors and everything, but let's go back in the number of years in Brainerd. Remember the shingles that they used to put on houses? Or garages? All right. Then we had stucco. Then we have some, and you guys may have it, it may be around where they've got the, the rocks at, by the front door going up at an angle in areas. That was the best thing ever at the time, correct? And then masonite come along. Best thing. We don't have anything better than this. Why, it could be the same thing today. We're saying, why did we let them do that fifty years from now? So I think in having the thirty percent that you're looking at difference of different sidings, colors, red siding, blue siding, you know, white trim or whatever, in my opinion, works. But when you start adding those other components, they, they are labor. Giving an example, what we'll charge for vinyl siding, depending what you may pick out, it's probably four dollars a square foot. Stone or rock is going to be forty to fifty dollars a square foot. There is a vast difference in the cost for those things. And if you're talking an apartment, you're talking big areas.
James? I believe what staff is recommending is not the requirement of stone or mason products. I believe what they're suggesting is other products to be used other than one monolithic.
James, do you want to set?
Yeah, so really I listed five items there and, and, you know, not fully refined, but would, would, the idea would be that, you know, we have to at least incorporate two of them. So, you know, you could just do covered porches and two different siding types. Um, so you don't have to do brick and, and mortar. It'd just be an option to, you know, if, if you wanted to do that as one of your el, required elements, you could do that.
I misunderstood. Yeah. Oh, that was a good question though. We, we clarified what we're, we're looking at there. Uh, C, are you on C at this point?
Yep. So C is, I know we're working kind of through the garage one right now and that was just recommended for approval. Um, part of the staff report in there is, is when we looked at it from a staff perspective and, and planning commission, that was one of the uh maybe things that would prevent uh somebody from buying a historic home and chopping it kind of haphazardly up is that they would have to add that garage in order to do it. Um, there's still the ostrich parking requirement that uh would maybe prohibit smaller lots from um, you know, redeveloping one of those historic homes. I know it is in our comprehensive plan to preserve some of our historic structures in the city. Uh, so this is an, an idea to potentially um require a conditional use permit if you're con, converting a single family home. You can still build if it was a vacant lot and, or it was a house that needed to demolish, you could still build a duplex as permitted. But if you're converting a single family home, it would maybe require a conditional use permit.
I like it. Other thoughts? Tiffany, please?
I, I think there is um great appetite for this because it's not so much the conversion of single family homes into multifamily. It's that people tend to do it very badly. I think a conditional use permit would, if they're going to do it well, we, it could be okay. Um, but that will let us control that. So I think it's a great idea.
All right. Very good. James, you got anything?
No, sorry.
All right. That's all right. Spacing out. Do it all the time. Mr. Peterson?
I do not.
All right. Then we're on to uh D.
So next one is should a minimum unit size for two to four unit buildings be four hundred square feet? Um, this was brought up uh in an email from uh Commissioner Francis of we allow multifamily buildings to do efficiency units um of four hundred square feet. Should, right now our single family homes and up to four units are required to be five hundred square feet. Should it be the same as, as a multifamily building essentially? So staff wants some consideration. Does the planning commission think that a two to four unit building could have four hundred square foot units in it?
Any thoughts from the group?
I, I don't see any issues with that.
I, I would think if that is a problem, I think the market, you hope the market was sorted out. People would say, I, I'm not going to move into a four hundred square foot. You'd hope that. I, I think we're good on that one. So that will lead us to E.
So E would be multifamily units. Right now, we don't have um a lot of code for, for multifamily buildings. Um, one idea from staff would be that multifamily units shall incorporate uh balconies, covered porches. I think you'd probably add decks to it or staggered wall patterns. Included a couple, a couple pictures here. Obviously the, the first one you have kind of staggered wall patterns, decks and i, within that one. Um, also on the bottom one, you see there's some decks on the, on the outside of it, but kind of staggered walls. I know the uh Thrifty White project, uh, they're looking at doing kind of staggered walls, uh, the bottom part being completely, I guess, one foundation unit. Uh, but they're providing some interest so it's not just one kind of square building. So staff's trying to figure out ways that uh you can maybe create just a little bit more interest to make sure that uh um you're not, not getting just a square box.
Any thoughts there?
Yes, I like, I like what you did with the other, where was that? With B, where it's, you know, pick two of five or, you know. I, I like that idea that, you know, we can give them some, some flexibility. I would like to see maybe some other, more options in that list. Um, but of course I don't have any good ideas for it, but you've got great ideas, James.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Uh, with that, um, do that much I think is all great, but it, am I missing you have to do one or two of them or it says should and shall? So do you have to do them all or?
The idea would be that you'd have to incorporate one of them. So, yeah, even if, I think you add decks to it, even if it's a, um, there are some other requirements that would probably stay in there that you have to, you know, maybe have some different siding patterns and provide interest through. that you have to, you know, maybe have some different siding patterns and provide interest through that. But on top of just the different siding patterns, maybe just have to have a deck on the outside of it. There's examples of that where still kind of a rectangle building, but even having a deck on the outside of it provides some extra interest to the building.
James?
The, the point, the subject matter that I'd like to discuss within this specific situation is that there's a strong difference between a six unit or even an eight unit multifamily and a 25 unit. And when incorporating design elements such as visual interests, things, I believe that there is a significant necessity for them to exist in the higher density structure than within a lower. And so I don't know how to functionally do that other than create the elements that, you know, more elements needed in higher density structure. So that way, you know, a five, six, seven ends up being in one category. And then there's more necessity for design elements of visual interest as it increases in size.
I think you're looking at a tiered system. That makes some sense there. James, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, maybe you go up to like 10 units. You have kind of one set of parameters. It could just be, you know, some decks, maybe a deck that has to be put on the outside and a couple of different colors of siding. Then you get beyond that, when you're seeing, you know, some of these large ones here, there's maybe another standard. So that's certainly a potential.
Increased visual interest standards.
Peterson?
One, I agree with all of you on that. I would maybe leave the decks out of it just because some developers may want to stay away from an exterior deck or something like that for liability or insurance or those. So do other things would be my suggestion. That would be an allowable.
It'd be, yeah, allowable. I was thinking too, you know, say you have a five-plex that doesn't have a second story. You know, maybe it's just a covered entry that you have at that point to provide some interest. And that's why I kind of put that covered entry in there.
I think all of these moves get us away from that, the brutalism, the square building that we've all kind of suffered through for years and the, there have been far too many of them built. I love the one on the bottom. I think that's quite interesting on there. If we're set with E, are we ready to move on to F? You have the thoughts? Unless we'll move on to item F there.
Yeah, I just included that. That would still be kind of kept within the code there. So I'll work on maybe kind of creating those two tier differences within multifamily dwellings. So then the next part would be the third section, which is commercial industrial use. Wanted to note the PSP district is not included in the code, so that should be put under the, in staff's opinion, the commercial use design standards. It's usually in and around our commercial areas, residential areas, so certainly shouldn't have industrial design.
That's the public schools, public areas?
It is, yep. Yeah, we have some, you know, large churches, large senior care facilities that would be PSP district and then predominantly schools after that.
Didn't we have to sort of come up with a teen challenge and some of their changes a little bit and stuff?
Yep, yep. So they were in PSP as well.
Okay.
Number B would be, I am seeing more and more metal siding. Not the type of metal siding that you picture with the exposed fasteners. Staff's still recommending that that would be prohibited, but potentially allowing metal siding as a conditional use permit in the commercial district. Right now, we only allow a certain percentage. I want to say it's maybe 15% of the building can be metal sided. Sean, if you want to scroll down. This is just one quick example of commercial buildings. Sometimes they'll do metal siding, you know, in between brick and it'll be, and it'll be staggered. This would allow for a review to, it'd still be a conditional use permit, so it could be reviewed to see how it looks. But you have a lot of this flat metal paneling that's becoming, I guess, more contemporary and something that, that are interest developers and contractors. So this is something just to consider if planning commission would like to go down that route of allowing more than 15% by a conditional use permit.
James?
Strongly in favor. Personal opinion as to design elements that are going to be easily accessible and economical for, and long-lasting for rehab projects and/or new construction. I believe that it's a great opportunity for a standard that could be acceptable.
Thank you. Tiffany, any thoughts on this?
No.
Mr. Peterson?
Have him scroll down. I'd like to see A, B, and C again. The other way, sorry. So we're talking commercial and industrial. It's the same thing?
So for this one, industrial can use metal. So right now, we're really just talking commercial. Commercial is the one that's really relegated to that 15%.
Okay, thank you.
My thought on it is the devil's in the detail. What do we mean by the metal? I think there is metal we could, I could look at and go, well, that, I didn't even realize it was metal, right? If I looked at something that is meant, that kind of imitates or another material, I might go, I had no idea it was metal. So I'm kind of with you, but I think the devil would be in the detail of what do we mean here? I don't know, we'd have, I don't think we want to get into having a list of these are okay and not okay, but I think that's going to be the tricky spot.
And I believe that the reason for the conditional use is the opportunity for the review.
To do that, okay. Does that all make some sense to you?
Yep, that makes sense. And, yeah, and I think within that you'd specifically say that metal siding with exposed fasteners is prohibited. So if somebody doesn't even come for a conditional use permit for that.
I'd be good with that.
What did you say? With no fasteners? I mean, like?
Exposed fasteners. So typically with the flat metal paneling, you're not going to have the screws that you have in with the, with the rubber washers on them.
Why is that?
Just because that's certainly aesthetically, when you're driving down, you know, say Washington Street, is something that just, you know, certainly is not aesthetically pleasing, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there are certain, I put a steel roof on a porch a few years ago, 10 years ago. And I think it would have looked just terrible to have the bolts sticking out on there. I think it was worth being, being made to spend a little more money and get the better product. So I thought that was well worth it in that spot. We, where are we? Are we moving on to, are we on C or are we, I've lost our place here?
C, windows.
We're on B, so then we're on to C.
Yep, so C, we do have a standard right now for glass. Duncan, that's why they had to have some of the glass on the front, and I think they put the entrance on there. This, this is a code from Duluth, transparency. A minimum of 75% of the front facade between two and eight feet above the sidewalk must be comprised of transparent, non-reflective windows into the commercial space. A minimum of 25% of the windows shall have views directly in and out of the ground floor occupied space. So staff does recommend applying this to the Main Street District, the Town Center Overlay District, and the Commercial Corridor District only. So this wouldn't be in your general commercial areas like Cub Food, but it would be more of your downtown setting. And this kind of leads on to the next part of discussing, you know, potential mixed-use development in the Commercial Corridor District. So it just gives a, it's a much simpler code than what we currently have right now for our glass facades that we want to see in our Commercial Corridor District.
Thoughts on the change there? I would say I like the change. I think that the transparency is very important and I think the language is cleaned up, so that's good. Mr. Norwood?
Specifically, holding it back from general commercial, your thoughts on that?
General commercial, you get more of the larger department stores. That's what it's made for. So most of our areas in general commercial, other than maybe like a strip mall, is, would never be able to meet these standards. I e, like a Cub Food, a Walmart, something like that.
Right, the ones that are presenting the big solid wall of brick.
Exactly.
Got it, got it. Well, any other, if we're silent on C at this point, let's move on to D.
So D, unfortunately, the, I had, I had redlined this one. It didn't show up in the packet. Currently, the Industrial District is required to meet commercial standards if they're within 300 feet of any of those roads. Staff is recommending that if it's adjacent to the road, so if it's on the road, then it has to meet commercial. Because this is an issue when you're, you say 300 feet from South Sixth Street and, but you're, nobody's ever going to see the property. You still have to abide by commercial standards, you know, and you're well within the industrial zoning district. So staff is looking at this one. You'd still have to meet commercial if you're on the road. Certainly, we want some of our major thoroughfares to look nice, but getting rid of that within 300 feet, 300 feet part and making it just adjacent.
Thoughts on that from the group?
I'm slow. Can you walk me through that again? So 300 feet and beyond?
So yeah, so right now, the code states that structures that are industrial in nature that are on Business 371, 210, 25, and 18, and Oak Street and County Road 3. If you're within 300 feet of that road and you're industrial zoned, you have to meet commercial standards, which are much higher. You're only allowed 15% metal in those situations. So this is for industrial zoning district. Right now, staff is recommending that if you're on that road, you still have to meet commercial standards and you're zoned industrial. But if you're off that road, zoned industrial, you're not, you know, you're not having to meet those same design standards.
So eliminating the 300-foot part of it, just the statement of if you're adjacent to it.
And I think to make this easier to understand, you're talking one block. Is that 300 feet, one block? That's maybe a little more easier to relate to? Okay. Then if we've got that set up, I guess we are on, at this point, we have moved along to E.
And the last one, this is something that we worked on in the EDA, something that they've recommended to help spur development within the Commercial Corridor District. So Commercial Corridor really goes from the bridge and then about to the Cub Food area. So that's our Commercial Corridor District along Washington Street. Right now, we're seeing a lot of redevelopment in fast food. You know, certainly Dunkin' Donuts opened up and was able to rehabilitate kind of a vacant problem property in that spot. But we're not getting a lot of large design on this road. I gave examples, I think previously to the planning commission of a road in Moorhead that allowed mixed-use development that previously did not, and really spurred development. Same type of area next to a railroad, major thoroughfare coming into the city. Once it was opened up to mixed-use development, you saw some really large development in that area and a lot of investment. So this is where staff is recommending allowing that mixed-use development. It would be much like the Main Street District where there's no residential on the main floor, so you're not losing your commercial. But would really, right now in Brainerd, there's a lot of incentives to redesign like Thrifty White with residential. They can certainly maximize profit and redevelopment because of those residential units.
Any thoughts there? I like what the notion there. I think when I look at Washington Street, I realize whatever we've been trying for the last 30 years hasn't worked. So I'm up for new ideas on that. Yes, James?
And so mixed use is currently allowed within Main Street, but not Town Center?
So Town Center, Town Center mixed use is allowed. Town Center is not required to be. So Town Center, except for the Overlay District, you can have a straight apartment in Town Center. Main Street is your, really your core area, the Laurel Street area. So Town Center kind of sounds like the center, but it's actually the area around your main downtown. So the Town Center, you can do an apartment on there. You don't have to do mixed-use development. In the Commercial Corridor District, there would still be, because it is quite commercial in that area, there'd still be that requirement for commercial on the ground floor.
Got it. Well, if we are ready, then we can move on to, we are on number four at this point, accessory structures.
So this is another one that the redline didn't show up. Previously, in the code, it's required on a shed under 200 square feet that it would have to be a standing seam metal roof. So that's the one that does not have exposed fasteners. An example is the elevator area outside here. That's a standing seam metal roof. Staff would like the planning commission to consider, would you still like to see a standing seam metal roof on sheds? Or would you, or would the planning commission, and this is for sheds under 200 square feet, or would a exposed fastener metal roof be allowed?
Thoughts from the group? Mr. Peterson?
I guess we're going to disagree where I have no problem. In fact, I've even seen designs where the fasteners are a different color than the steel roof to accentuate them. So I have no problem with, with not, with just screws rather than the standing seam. And there again, and that's where some of the respects cost is probably double to do one over the other.
James?
I am, my thought on it is that in certain zoning districts that are commercial and/or industrial in nature, it's fine that it can be exposed fasteners and other situations, even canvas or vinyl. I'll say that very softly, because I don't want to get shot. But for, for some of the other ones, so Commercial Corridor, General Commercial, some of the ones that we are a lot more restrictive already in, I would say that even the sheds still need to be as restrictive. But in some of those other ones, a little bit of a loosening, so that way more usability for those other zoning districts, it's more liberal.
And right now, our industrial zones do allow for exposed fasteners. So this is predominantly, you see this code being applied for residential properties in the city of Brainerd. Right now, they're required to, if they do want a metal shed, it would have to have a standing seam metal roof.
I'm going to eliminate that. I mean, I don't see it. It's also required on a house in residential, correct?
That's correct.
And that can be tough on some people if they want to go to a metal roof. So just to keep that in mind.
All right. Any thoughts on this, Tiffany?
I, I kind of agree with James that in our areas where we don't want to have ugly-looking pole barns. I think, and we're not saying they have to go with the standing seam metal roof. They have other roofing options.
So we are only discussing for under 200 square feet. So once you get, you know, above 200 square feet, it has to match the primary structure, which is, in most cases, is going to be shingle roofs.
But you can have an ugly shed under 200 square feet.
And right now, the code still provides for, may include a variety of building materials, maybe metal sided. So the metal siding could have potentially exposed fasteners, but then the standing seam metal roof would be required.
Well, that's silly.
All right. I, I tend to think on this, I've got two different minds. One is it's a shed. And then the other few is that you make a decision to save some money in one year and then for the next 40 years, it's going to affect the perception of the neighborhood. So in other words, it's a small decision. If you go just a little bit further, you're going to get a nicer product for many, many years. But I'm a salesman, so. Careful listening to me. All right. Think you got enough there to work on for, on 4A at this point?
No.
So that, you know, I'll include some stuff, you know, certainly look, look back at our discussions here. There's certainly some disagreement on a few areas. I may include areas just so we can review or then take out. So that's what I think we'll go with. The next time that I bring a actual proposed ordinance, I think we'll take motions and votes on some of these to figure out the consensus. So if you see some of these things in here and we don't exactly know, you know, if that is what, you know, our direction was tonight, some things may be included with the intent that we'll get a, you know, maybe a full vote and an actual vote on what we want to see in the ordinance on some of these sections.
Good. And just a couple of other things on that, do we have to talk about tents for storage or hoop houses? Or are they pretty well-covered in other sections, so we don't have to worry about that?
Yeah, I think that would probably still be prohibited at this point.
Excellent. And then my only other suggestion, to see what the group thinks about, a couple of these items, we've had two different thoughts on it. Can we have two different thoughts written up in there? They could be 4A, it could look like this, I'm just picking up a number here, or it could look like that. And so then when we get the larger group, everybody will have kind of a chance to understand the difference we're looking at, right?
Yep, I think that could be, I can certainly do that.
I think that might be helpful, so we don't have to say, oh, tonight, your idea is out. We can keep, we can keep the, keep a lot of different ideas in the flow.
That sounds good.
Thanks, James. That's a bunch of good, that's a bunch of good work. I really appreciate that. All right, that leads us up to number, item H. That would be the public forum. This is the chance for citizens to come forth and discuss matters that are not on tonight's agenda. I will open the public hearing at 7:10. Do we have anybody online? Do we have anybody here? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:10, and we're going to move along to staff report. James?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just wanted to add a few things that City Council's been working on in the last month here after our last planning commission meeting. So the state affordable housing aid that the city received last year Uh, so the state affordable housing aid, uh, that the city received last year, which was about 96,000. 88,000 was awarded to Habitat for Humanity for the construction of three new homes in Brainerd. I think one of them was currently underway and two other ones, uh, are proposed for next year. Uh, so that's something the city's go, did receive, uh, allocation this year as well. We'll be working at the beginning of the year to also get those funds distributed to applicants. And I think after this year, it'll go down. Um, but in 2004, we also received 96,000. So we're going to continue to, to work on infill development with some of those state aid funds. Uh, City Council also passed an ordinance prohibiting camping in the city limits of Brainerd. Uh, we do have language in our zoning code for this, but this is probably specifically geared towards public property or predominantly. Um, and then lastly, I can't remember if I mentioned this at a previous Planning Commission meeting, but, uh, City Council passed the Central Business District Incentive Policy. Uh, so this is an extension of the River to Rails. Uh, River to Rails was kind of Washington Street, uh, down to Oak Street, and then the river over to the NP Center. So this extends it to pretty much all of Washington Street, uh, to the city limits. And then all the way on South Sixth Street, along, right along South Sixth Street down to Buffalo Hills Lane East. So this is incentive policy that waives sack and whack. So this could, you know, certainly affect, uh, mixed-use development in the Commercial Corridor District and incentivize it. I know one area that we're going to be doing, the, the Washington, um, street reconstruction project. This was, uh, an idea to maybe help some of those businesses out as well to, to do some re- remodel projects while that's happening and, and maybe lighten a little bit on, on some of the building permit costs as well. Um, so that's everything that I have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Moving up to number 10, Commission Member Reports. We're going to start with Tiffany. Do you have anything?
Sure. Um, so just because I feel like people who are involved in Planning Commission or watching us on YouTube might be interested in this sort of thing. Uh, MnDOT is going to be having an open house to talk about the 371-210 intersection there. On, um, it is September 10th, uh, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the, at MnDOT. Um, and then there is the next Rosenmeyer Forum, uh, is going to be on housing.
Oh.
So that might also be of interest to people in this room or watching us on the, uh, on the internet. So, and that's going to be on the, uh, 17th, Tuesday, the 17th at 7:00 PM at CLC. Uh, and then I was able to be at the groundbreaking for the My Neighbor to Love Coalition's, uh, 12-plex that is going up. And that was very exciting as well, so.
Great report, Tiffany.
Yeah, it was a lot.
James, can you, can you match that?
I don't know if I can match it, but, um, given tonight's conversation within, um, I am going to ask for more discussion as to data centers. And it, not necessarily crypto mine, but because crypto mining ends up encompassing some other portions of things that are very similar to data centers and that type of a use. Personal opinion, uh, might be different than a lot of others, but I think we need to have a firm con- conversation as to what we want to see done with it. Not, and again, I'm going to try to emphasize the fact that I think that we need to have a conversation, not specifically to crypto mining, but the similar types of uses that are associated with large amounts of computers that have large cooling towers that produce noise. And those kinds of potential issues that arise from them. I, from what I see and I understand of the future is that we will have more data centers that continuously are built within, uh, as they require significant forms of infrastructure to exist. There's going to be more of them coming. They might not be crypto mining. They might be just for the sake of all of us to be able to use. And there is potential significant economic, uh, impact that they could bring. And so, um, given tonight was more about outside storage type buildings, there's a caution us with eliminating, uh, an entire industry based upon the potential for the noise that it may produce. Especially when there's cooling towers in multiple other places, immediately inside city limits, immediately next door to TN1 zoning districts. And so it's, it's one of those things that I, I would hate to say no to significant, large economic development based solely on the fact that, well, it has a cooling tower or the type of business and commerce that it does. That's about it.
That's a, a quick follow-up question to you, for you. Do you think this would be a separate issue in itself? Or is it something we could incorporate into the larger noise issue that Tiffany had talked about earlier?
They, they're going to create noise. That's the heavy part about it is, and anytime that you incorporate any cooling tower, it is going to create noise. So be it the hospital, be it the high school, be it any school, um, cooling towers are going to create noise. The intensity of them, and within data centers, there's multiple ways to skin the cat and to simply flush the whole situation out based upon how one organization has done it less favorably than other organizations could do it. Doesn't mean that it should be significantly swiped out and flushed. Just because one did it bad doesn't mean that all of them will do it bad, especially if there's language as to help guide them into what is being done in other areas.
A restatement question. Do you, would you like to see a one big attempt to look at noise? Or should we look at technology and noise a, as a separate thing?
I believe that we should look at the, personally, I believe that we should look at the use type as being needed to be addressed. The noise thing is a separate thing, but the noise thing with this use type is always going to be significant.
Okay.
Based upon the fact that we need to cool them in order to use them.
Yeah.
And so if that means that we have to put them in specific zones, be they in an industrial zone, which I'm pretty sure that's why we all put them in industrial zoning. It, because that's the kind of thing that you would see there. But to, as to the noise situation, to go back and try to start hashing out all the other cooling towers that exist all the way around the rest of us. And we say that, well, these ones can't be there because the fact that, you know, it's too noisy. Uh, unfortunately, the people that live right next door to the hospital experience the exact same thing. The people that live next to Washington Education Services Building experience the exact same thing. As long as they're on the east side of that building, I should say. If they're on the west side of the building, they don't hear it. But it's, to say, to say that it's not permitted and because of the type of use, I would hate to see that. It, if the issue is an issue based upon the equipment that's being used, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
All right, very good. Mr. Peterson?
Everything they said is what I was going to say, so.
You stole all your thunder? All of it?
No, my, I, I would, I would agree with you. My, my point was more noise than anything. It doesn't really, you know, I think the use is something separate and, and I agree with you. If they, if the, you know, company B comes along, says, does the same thing, but they can make it quiet so it doesn't affect the neighbors, I'm fine with it.
Sure. All right, I appreciate that. All right, and, uh, I'm just going to talk about one thing tonight. I want to talk about this group. I, I think overall, we have put together a pretty good board, uh, of, uh, pretty good, uh, group of commissioners right here. But we, we've been short a commissioner for about six months. And talk about Mr. Grunwald. I think he's a great guy and I'd love to see him back on the group. What's the status? Are we, is Jeff going to be able to rejoin us?
So I did, I reached out. I haven't received word back. I'll try reaching out next week again.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, it's really important that it's, that we can be seven people and, uh, use, have all the voices in here. And I, I understand everybody's life changes and sometimes you can make meetings and sometimes you can, you can't make meetings and I can appreciate that. But, you know, right now, we're lucky to make a quorum tonight, you know? It's, uh, and, uh, so we can, uh, it, it should be nice to have a full commission again. So that's all I have tonight. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? There we go. See, Tiffany had a no discussion. Do you appreciate that?